Okay. With that, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:37 today. And we will reconvene to public session. And can we have a roll call, please?
Juliette Chico, Student Trustee.
Okay.
Lou Stoltz, Board Member. Here. Barbara Gaines.
Here.
Michael Adams.
Here.
Steve Buckel, Vice President.
Here.
Lauren Herman, President.
Here. Thank you. Oh, perfect. Very good. The public comment announcement, according to Governor Newsom's executive order on March 12th and March 17th, portions of these orders relax parts of the Brown Act, which allow elected officials to attend a meeting via teleconference without having to admit members of the public. And they allow some flexibility. So today, anyone wishing to view this meeting may do so via YouTube. As listed on the agenda, the meeting is recorded and available as a public record upon request. In-person comments, we've asked people to wear a face covering, adhere to social distancing protocols, and have temperatures taken upon entering the room. We ask that you only stay at the meeting to provide your comments unless space is available, and space will be limited due to social distancing and on a first-come, first-served basis. For people who would prefer not to attend in person but wish to share a comment, we'd like you to share your comments via Zoom. And in order to do this, you were to email Patty McClure no later than 5:00 p.m. today. We did receive those emails, and we will call those folks into comment at the appropriate portions of the meeting. Now let's stand carefully for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everybody turn and place the flag and put your hand over your heart and begin with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item nine, approval of meeting agenda. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Advice?
Agree.
Do we have her on unmuted?
Agree.
Advice?
Agree. Agree. Agree?
We're going to give it a second so that we can get the speaker problem addressed.
Agree? Can you hear?
Okay, Juliette, if you can hear us, we're working on the speaker so that we can all hear you. So Ms. Cook can hear you, but the rest of us would really like to as well. So thanks for your patience. We're just going to work this out. Juliette, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Yes, we can.
Okay. Great.
Applause to our tech magicians over there. Thank you, gentlemen. So we'll proceed with approval of the meeting agenda. That's item 9.1, and I called for advice. Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we'll move to item 10, which is the open forum on non-agenda items. And I'm going to start with those folks who are with us in person. So we'll begin with Mr. Anderson. Dennis Anderson.
Good evening. It's an honor and a privilege to address the board. I feel like I know many of the people here. I often speak on behalf of veterans' community issues. This is a little bit wider community issue as well, but I do take note the profoundly patriotic nature of the service of all board members here, including those who served. I'm here to speak on a subject of, I think there's been some administrative and community crosswind on a reorganization plan that's being proposed by the president. And I made a point of reading the reorganization plan. And as it looked like reorganization plans of the kind that I surveyed as a community newspaper editor for about 20 years, it hit me that it fell in the range of fairly standard stuff. Within the realm of the standard stuff, that recruitment is going to be opened up to the community for a wide or diverse pool of applicants, and that it also falls in the area of the kind of reorganization that is being done particularly during a time of budget exigency. But the other thing I really wanted to add is that if the president has taken some heat in the formulation of the plan, presidents take heat all the time. And this is a good president, and he knows how to do that. But in reviewing and surveying the organization itself, I also took a review of, I recall when we first became acquainted about eight years ago. I have ties to the community college. I was able to teach here for a couple of years. Considered it a great privilege. Have retained those ties. Worked on the advisory committee for the college. And it just seems that if you were to mark the progress that the college has made, both in the areas of diversity and recruitment and hiring, and also in moving the college forward, I think when you have the circumstances where you could get a bond advanced and actually be building the infrastructure that the college will be needing and using for the next generation, not this generation, that that's a hallmark of success. But put it past that, I think he's, as president, Mr. Knudsen is a good listener. I think he cares. I think his passions are in the interest of the college. And I would also say, having worked with the military community-wide, that he made it his business that no veteran would go unsheltered and that they had the wherewithal that they needed to get started, even if their GI Bill hadn't kicked in. That's not the hallmark of an uncaring individual. So I would say, with respect to the board, I wish you all great success in the endeavors of a very challenging time. But I think you've got a good president and that he can work across the community spectrum of opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. David Adams.
Good evening, Board. It's nice to see you guys again. Little bandit barrier there, but I guess we'll be okay. I'm here today to talk to you about the All Campus or All Faculty email system. In case you don't know, the All Faculty email system allows professors like myself to email the rest of the faculty as well. And over the summer, we had a little bit of discourse, as we all would say, and some of it was negative, and I totally admit to that. And I think the president made the decision that we need to halt the discourse for the time being, which I think at that point actually was a prudent decision, to be quite honest. And so I don't fault that. But here we are now in September. We're now in week five of the semester. We're working from home. I cannot communicate with my fellow professors. And this is a problem because we're not on campus to talk to our professors on a normal basis. So now we're isolated from home, and yet now we can't even talk to our fellow professors. That's a problem in terms of being able to share curriculum, share ideas, pedagogical ideas, et cetera. Now, I teach business law amongst many classes here, and we talk about the test for non-commercial or political free speech. And under the, the Supreme Court has given nonpolitical, or excuse me, political or noncommercial speech the highest strict scrutiny analysis. And thus, in order for a government action, such as what has been done, to be legal, it must be necessary to promote a compelling government interest. And not only that, it has to be done in the least intrusive manner. And so what I would say today is, there was a compelling government interest, I think, at that point. And I don't disagree with that. However, now the function of the school needs to go on. And so if we want to do it in the least intrusive manner, maybe a way to do that is if there's a certain professor on the faculty side or someone on the classified side, that you can mute their access to All Faculty, to All Campus. But give everyone the chance to speak. And I'm telling you, it's very tough to speak to my colleagues because I literally have to send an email, and I have to individually put 60 different names in there. That's too much of my time that's taken away. Now, given my role as the lead negotiator here for the union, I get to, you know, the privilege sometimes to talk to our general counsel, Bridgette Cook. And so I called her up the other day, and we had a nice discussion about this. And I said, Bridgette, now's the time. We need to, we need to, you know, let the faculty and even let the, you know, we need to let faculty be able to talk again. And we're having that dialogue. But I would just ask you, Board, that right now, we need to, the faculty need each other, and the best way that we can speak to each other is through email, especially when we're not on campus. And so we just implore the board, at least think and put it under advisement that maybe, you know, we could go back to what we had before. And if we have faculty that have violated, you know, AP code or BP code, then you can mute them. I know Rick probably has the ability to do that. And so what I'm just asking is, especially since we're now separated, help us out as professors a little bit. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you. And Rosa Fuller.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President, Ms. McClure, and our admin staff. I hope I can be understood here. My name is Rosa Fuller. I'm the faculty co-chair of the Faculty Professional Development Program. I'm here to speak today to you about the unintended chaos that has impacted the Faculty Professional Development Program because of some administrative decisions that have been made and approved by the board and to ask for your consideration. So the Professional Development Program has been under increased pressure this year because of COVID and having to move all events from on-campus to off-campus at the last minute because, again, due to COVID and not knowing the situation. As you know, the faculty have to comply with a set number of hours every year to meet the professional development requirements. They can fulfill these hours several ways. One of the ways is by attending faculty presentations, going to trainings offered by the chancellor's office or HR, professional conferences, discipline-related events. These are some of the ways that faculty can fulfill their professional development requirements. The part of the program that has faced tremendous strain this year is the part that has to do with faculty presentations. This program was developed, as it is every year, last year. The entire year revolves around taking proposals from faculty, soliciting, reviewing, putting together a program. The program is finalized generally anywhere between March, April, or so the prior year. It was finalized last year, but we started out the year with chaos because there was a last-minute scramble to move all events from campus to a remote location. So this posed a heavier-than-usual administrative toll on the program. Generally, we would have started the semester, and everything would have been posted online. Things would have functioned smoothly. Faculty would have known where to go and how they can fulfill some of their hours. As of August this year, there were no events on the calendar, and nothing had been scheduled. Faculty were contacted. Many agreed to convert their program to a remote format. Others decided to pull their program, and others decided to move it to spring in the hopes that we would be back on campus. All this required administrative support in order to make all of these changes. Unfortunately, at the last minute, at that same time, the senate coordinator was pulled from the program, and that left the program without any administrative support. And so a bit of a scramble. No one has replaced her, not even a part-time clerical. Faculty at this point are creating their own Zoom events, but there is no one to upgrade or update this information on the calendar. Furthermore, faculty don't have a way to communicate with their peers. Typically, in prior years, the faculty has sent out an All Faculty email notifying the events, their peers, that this event is taking place. And if somehow they couldn't send it out, they might have asked assistance from the senate coordinator. Because that position is vacant, and there is no administrative support for the program, undue pressure has fallen on faculty to fulfill some of these administrative duties. Pulling the admin support from the program jeopardizes the professionalism and the credibility of the Faculty Professional Development Program. It shifts an administrative burden onto the backs of faculty, and it also puts the program in peril with chancellor's office requirements. ABC is required to document attendance at these events, evaluate the program, and maintain accurate records. Without support for the program, this has been difficult to do. Only one person, the faculty co-chair, myself, receives a fraction of release time, and only during the academic year. These new demands, administrative demands, pull away from other committee duties, which is to monitor the program, build next year's program, develop Fall and Opening Day and Spring Welcome Back Day, among other activities. This year alone, coming up with the program for Fall Opening Day was a scramble, and work was done by faculty who were not compensated for working on these matters, which they all were happy to do and agreed to do because it's imperative that faculty have offerings available so that they can fulfill their hours. But lack of administrative support creates a burden for the faculty who are already overwhelmed by moving everything online, puts ABC in jeopardy with compliance requirements, and weakens not only the entire program, but the future of the program. So I respectfully request that the board consider the unintended consequences of approving this reorganization and of leaving the Faculty Professional Development Program without any administrative support and provide some relief by way of providing some type of administrative support and by allowing faculty to resume their use of the All Faculty email account. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we will move to our comments via Zoom. And we'll begin with Basilio Hernandez.
And he is not online.
He is not online. Okay. Then we'll move to Tino Garcia.
He's been admitted to the meeting.
Thank you. I'm a faculty member. And first, I'd like to make some remarks on the proposed administrative reorganization. Thank you for listening. A few weeks ago, I was pleased to see that an attempt was made to address some of the concerns about the proposed reorganization raised by faculty, staff, students, and community members. Opening more positions to recruitment is a good start. At the same time, I'm still concerned that the modified proposed reorg does not clearly or fully address the root of the concerns about equity and fairness. The updated proposal foregrounds some progress in increasing diversity in administrative and executive leadership roles, as well as faculty hiring over the last seven years. However, the extent to which this progress is limited is unclear because the proposal keeps invisible the extent to which white representation will predominate through and after this reorg. These appointments and their predecessors tend to unfairly limit competitive processes. It seems that appointments in recent years have tended to support the status quo, a status quo in which 79% of students are people of color, and around 79% of appointments to executive-level positions have recently gone to white appointees. To his credit, President Knudsen acknowledges the limits of the reorganization and the broader lack of progress on issues of representation at the college when he states that, quote, "With more than 125 full-time employees who have been here over 20 years, it takes time for demographical shifts to occur," end quote. Given traditional processes, this may be the case. But this statement asserts that real progress shifts gradually over time and that representation and equity are not that urgent. But the fact is that progress needs to be pushed forward by those unwilling to wait for change. To this point, recently, President Knudsen rightfully nodded to John Lewis as the conscience of the Congress, highlighting Lewis's courage for pushing Congress to change its processes and policies. But Lewis was impatient about achieving equitable outcomes and stopping the unfairness. As he famously wrote in his speech for the March on Washington, quote, "To those who have said, 'Be patient and wait,' we must say that patience is a dirty and nasty word," unquote. So if we want to hold up Lewis's values, we should immediately place this reorganization on hold, and all positions should be openly recruited. On another note, I want to briefly remind us about the president's unwillingness, to my knowledge at least, to publicly redress the situation with the student whose private information he shared with the entire campus and who he publicly shamed. What is problematic about his unapologetic "my reply to a student" follow-up is that it clearly shows he sees nothing wrong with his actions toward the student or the way he expressed himself as a leader. The fact the message was shared publicly suggests that the message was a warning, not primarily to the student, but to anyone on campus who would challenge his authority. To act intentionally or not creates a hostile work environment for anyone who might dissent. As a leader, I feel the president should properly and publicly address the situation with the student to begin to rebuild trust with the campus and community. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Casey Priest.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez is in the waiting room. Do you want to take him next, the student?
No, let's go ahead to Casey, and then I'll come back.
Okay. Casey Priest. And she's live. Casey. Yes. Yes.
All right. I just want to make a quick public comment. Hold on just a moment. All right. I've expressed my concerns of the conduct of Antelope Valley College, the leadership there, before. Unfortunately, it appears little has changed. I appreciate ABC's formal denunciation of racism.
I'm sorry, I'm going to stop you. We can't hear. So hold on just a second, Casey. Let us get the volume adjusted.
Okay.
Microphone is set at full volume, so. Speakers are set at full volume as well. Casey, can you increase the volume on your microphone in your Zoom session, please?
Uh, yes. Does this make things better?
Marginally. Give me a little more.
All right.
Can we go into the speakers above? Move that.
Okay. This is about as loud as it can get, unfortunately. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, we can't. It's not broadcasting to the speakers in the room, and this mic's not picking it up effectively. She's gone to grab a patch cable so we can hardwire it in.
Okay.
Can you wait one moment?
Of course.
I'll come back to you.
I can wait one moment, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Casey, we're going to come back to you, and we're going to try. Do you want to try another one, Rick? Or do you think it's, we need to wait for the patch?
Um, well, the previous one was okay.
Right. So shall we try?
Projecting your voice. We can try a second one.
Okay. Do you want to try Basilio Hernandez, then?
It's processing the joint. It's not in yet. And now he, oh, there he is. Okay.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I can.
We need you to project your voice because we've got a separate microphone. So we're trying to make this work right now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all for gracing us at the time. And anyone watching, just peace and love to everyone. So here's our public comment. I will be reading, on the behalf of the United Artists for Social Change Club here on campus. I am currently the running, the president of the UASC. So here we go. "We, the United Artists for Social Change Club at Antelope Valley College, denounce racism and oppression of any kind and promote artivism, creativity, and empowerment through art of all mediums. We stand with fellow students, staff, and faculty to have our voices heard, to say that representation matters. We do not support President Knudsen's administrative reorganization proposal. We are concerned that the proposed administrative reorganization, intentionally or unintentionally, perpetuates inequity at a public institution, unfairly undermining BIPOC individuals and groups at ABC. We also make clear that although the Black Lives Matter statement remains at the ABC homepage, it has to be relegated to a marginal position. It has been relegated to a marginal position that is not immediately visible to visitors. We demand it to be placed back, front, and center on the big marquee slideshow in the front corner of Avenue K and 30th. Our club will continue to have our students' voices be heard and represented. We stand together as a community that wants to strengthen the values of integrity, love, peace, justice, and inclusivity. We know that as students, we must get involved with the ABC Administration Board and faculty. We must be informed and active participants of the decisions being made at our community college. Antelope Valley College Board, hear our voice. Let us know that we are being heard. Help students remember the power that we have by telling us." Thank you for your time, and bless you all. Much love.
Thank you.
Okay. Give me one second. I'm going to try.
Okay. Okay, we're going to try with Casey Priest again.
All right. Can you hear me all now? Okay. Can you hear me now? All right. Can you let me know if you hear me?
Okay, Casey, give it a try, will you?
All right. Okay. So I have written before, thank you all. I wrote, "While I appreciate Antelope Valley College's formal denunciation of racism compared to its formerly lukewarm response, the administrative reorganization leaves many concerned about a lack of representation in school leadership as well as the lack of transparency surrounding this decision. The impracticalities and inequities of remote education remain as well. A lack of tutoring flexibility for working students, learning software barely compatible with the technology available to students, a apparent lack of aid for those with learning disabilities, as well as the many thousands in line."
Casey, I apologize, I'm going to have to stop you again. We really can't hear you.
I can hear you, Casey.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so Casey, I apologize, I know this is incredibly inconvenient.
Yes, ma'am.
But would you please send us your comment and we will read it as board members and we will include it in the official record.
All right, yes, thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. And thank you very much.
Yes, who shall I send it to?
Okay, with that, we will move on to item 11, which is 11.1. Our Budget Update 2020-2021 Presentation.
Good evening and thank you for having me here to present the budget update. In this presentation, I will go over the budget and cash flow information along with new reporting deadlines. Our financial reporting deadlines have been extended by the Chancellor's Office in response to Governor Newsom's extending the tax filing deadline. We have provided a list of deadlines here on the slide. Notably, we have until October 31st to adopt a final budget. Our final adopted budget will go to the October board meeting. This is a snapshot in time of the 2019-2020 draft estimated unrestricted actuals. The books have moved since this presentation. We haven't closed the books yet. So I wanted to keep that, wanted to keep that in mind. Current revenue on this presentation is 89.5 million. Of the 89.5 million, approximately 8 million was for recalculation payments, not ongoing support. We receive at least four apportionment payment reports each year. The recalculation reports show how we ended up at the end of the prior fiscal years. The drivers for recalculation are the Student Centered Funding Formula, which we call SCIF, Property Tax Actuals, and the Education Protection Account, EPA. The large recalculation was mainly due to SCIF and a recalculation of this magnitude is not expected in the future. The calculation of revenue also includes a 2% total computational revenue, also called TCR, deficit for the current year revenue. TCR is calculated using SCIF and the funding sources for TCR include property tax, student enrollment fees, the Education Protection Account, and state general entitlement. Our assumption is that TCR will not be funded in total from these sources by 2%. Of the ending fund balance for 1920, we are proposing to set aside a $500,000 for categorical salaries and benefits in case any of those programs are cut. This will allow time to make financial decisions regarding those programs. We're also proposing to set aside 6.2 million to mitigate the state's current cash flow deferrals. Our share of the deferrals is 13.5 million. If the deferrals are not extended and are paid back on time, we are proposing to set aside 6.2 million to fully fund the OPEB Irrevocable Trust Fund. This fund was set up so that when fully funded, the earnings would pay the majority, if not all, of the annual other post-employment benefit expenses, which include medical, dental, vision, and life insurance premiums for retirees. We are currently funding this trust at $400,000 annually and current OPEB pay-as-you-go expenses are about a half a million dollars. Once the trust is fully funded, 800 to 900 K annually could be used for other district needs, including the classroom. The trust as of June 30th was at 2.7 million with net earnings of 89,000 for the year. Another irrevocable trust presented is the Pension Stabilization Fund. In this presentation, we are proposing no investment at this time. Pension costs have been going up each year until the state started investing in pensions, as they did recently, which reduced the pension rates for 2021. This fund's earnings would help stabilize our rates by helping to fund any increases. Pension expenses this year for us were 7.4 million. So this, this irrevocable trust, this pension stabilization fund is a part of BPAP 6200 that is planned to go to board in October. After the set-asides, we're left with an estimated 22.7% reserve. Looking at the trial balance today, as I told you that the books have moved and we haven't closed, this was reduced by 0.6%. Revenues for community colleges were significantly impacted by COVID-19 and the subsequent economic shutdown. Payments, payment deferrals of 1.5 billion were used as a solution by the state instead of budget cuts. This deferral includes Student Equity and Achievement Program that we receive funding on. Community colleges receive monthly payments. We don't receive a lump sum on July 1st. The deferral means that they will pay us what we are owed at a date later than originally planned. As stated in the previous slide, TCR is based on the Student Centered Funding Formula. SCIF is based on a base allocation reflecting enrollment, a supplemental allocation based on students receiving grants, and a student success allocation based on outcomes, such as the number of degrees and transfers to four-year institutions. The $1920 rates for these metrics will hold for FY 2021. We are doing better than most with this formula, but we are uncertain of future changes to the formula and how it would impact us. Pension rates went down, as stated previously. Our multi-year budget assumptions for revenue included 10% TCR reduction in 2021 and flat enrollments. We show a recovery in subsequent years, but no growth or cost of living adjustments, and we are assuming flat enrollments. Currently, expenses include step and column increases and the decrease in pension rates, but no resource allocation for budget committee until we have more information regarding funding by the state. A comparison between fall of 2019 and fall of 2020 shows a decrease in headcount of between 5,000 and 6,000 and FTEs between 5,000 and 600, which translates into about 3.5 to 4 million potential loss of revenue. We did certify a COVID-19 emergency conditions allowance, which held 1920 P2, 1920 recalc, and advanced 2021 at P1 FTEs, which is about 11,000. After, after this presentation was prepared, further discussions along with the impasse in Congress regarding new stimulus funding, it was determined that a 5% TCR reduction for '21, '22, and '22, '23 should be used. The community college system total deferral is 1 billion, of which our portion is 13 million. Per this schedule, we are receiving no payments from February through June. The Student Equity and Achievement Program will receive their full July payment and a small payment in August, with no payments from September through June. Our FY 2021 advanced apportionment does not show any other programs being deferred. Some payments for programs were accelerated. To help monitor the impact of the deferrals, Diana Kealan created a cash flow tool that we will be using monthly. Also, as previously discussed, we are proposing a set-aside of 6.2 million, which will help mitigate tax and revenue anticipation notes borrowing. These are short-term notes sold by a public entity and will be repaid for the proceeds of fee collections. This is the schedule of deferral repayments. I would like to note that the first bullet should state February 2021 through June 2021, payments deferred per the last slide. November through February was their first schedule that they released, the Chancellor's Office. This information is fluid and should be expected to change. Also, the scheduled, the second, that's also the schedule is, came from the Chancellor's Budget Workshop, and I do think that they meant June of '22. If we don't receive sufficient federal stimulus in October, with Congress at an impasse making that appear to be unlikely until after the election in November, it will be a challenge for the state to pay both regularly monthly apportionment payments plus the deferral repayments. If we do receive the federal funding, this will trigger off some of the deferrals. So I'm going to skip this slide because the information is on this slide as well. This is our three-year unrestricted fund projection. This unrestricted fund projection is assuming that the OPEB fund is fully funded. The set-asides are for categoricals, as I spoke before, the half a million. Also, an additional $100,000 for economic uncertainties to cover unanticipated emergencies, declines in property tax revenue, or other sources of funds, and additional program development activities not considered prior to the budget adoption. We are also showing structural deficit spending for three years. As stated previously, it has been determined that an additional TCR reduction of 5% should be considered. The recalculated reserve, considering that 5%, is 12.6 for 2021 and 5.6 for '22, '23. Also shave off another 0.6% for the neutral balance. The fiscal crisis and management assistance, assistant team, FICMAT, helps prevent and resolve financial challenges. Their checklist was developed to evaluate an entity's fiscal health and risk of insolvency in the current and two subsequent fiscal years. The more responses that contain no's increases your score. The higher the score, the greater the risk of insolvency. We use this checklist and have been considered a low risk. However, continued deficit spending would increase our score and risk of insolvency. Their list includes questions presented here on structural deficit spending. Are we avoiding it? If it is occurring, do we have a plan to eliminate it? And has it decreased? So in summary, I wanted to state again that things are fluid and will change. We are very dependent on state funding and how well the economy is doing. What we're trying to do here is to get ahead by planning for possible negative outcomes. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, this was very helpful.
Thank you for having me.
All right, item 12.1, report of closed session action. We have no action to report, so we will move on to item 13. And I would entertain a motion to consider the consent agenda, but pull off item 13.3 for a separate vote, since we have comments on that item. So can I have a motion for the consent agenda except 13.3? Advice?
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have the consent agenda approved. Now, if I could have a motion for item 13.3 to be considered separately? Very good, and we have comments concerning 13.3. So I think these are via Zoom. And the first is Aurora Byrd.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. So this is the comment for 13.3. As president of the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, I would like to know why the salaries for administrators and other employees involved in President Knutson's August 15th reorganization are listed as pending. It seems that since the reorganization was implemented on August 15th, employees moving into new positions should have known defined salaries and be listed on the personnel schedule. Are the original spreadsheets we were shown, hypothetical savings from the reorganization, no longer accurate? If they are not accurate, then has the basis for the reorganization vanished? With all due respect, pending salary increases appear to show a lack of transparency on the part of the ABC Administration. Thank you.
Is that something that you could speak to, President?
Yes, they're pending because the job descriptions are being worked right now and the pay raises that were in effect for those positions that, for current employees, and those are the only employees being advanced, they're current employees, those, those changes are being processed right now. There is, the openly recruited positions have been pulled out of the reorganization and will be recruited separately.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Brenda Hume.
Hi, there. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, sorry, let me stop the feedback there, sorry for that. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again after last month and continue my statement. The ongoing proposed reorganization of employees and the appearance on tonight's agenda of a new consulting contract for reclassification and comp- a new consulting contract for reclassification and compensation study, both represent a complete and unilateral change from the collective bargaining agreements at ABC. There are no other terms to describe these actions than an outright attack on equity for employees. I urge you, as an employee and a third-generation ABC alumna, not to approve either of these items. This district has hiring policies. This district has bargaining agreements. Why is this district now wasting public funds and time to find new ways to avoid them? As an individual who has personally experienced inequitable employment practices at ABC, I can explain the inequity inherent in avoiding established procedure. I myself occupied a previous position here that was eliminated through a very similarly proposed reorganization, stated by this administration, and approved by this board at the time as related to financial need. A Valley Press article on August 10, 2015 quoted the president as claiming, "The goal," quote, "for the advancement of Foundation Office," at which I worked at the time, "is to achieve full self-sufficiency by 2021, save for the executive director's salary and benefits. The Foundation's employees will remain district employees only temporarily, where 100% of salaries and benefits will be paid by the district in the 2015 and 2016, '17 fiscal year, dropping 25% each subsequent year until they are fully absorbed by the Foundation." Since the ABC Foundation's budget is not listed as a line item in the college budget, and the ABC Foundation no longer publicly publishes its annual report, how can we be confident that the president has carried out his financial promises since the realization? Is the ABC Foundation currently 100% self-sufficient through fundraising? Or does the district still contribute monies that we were told would be eliminated? What was the end result of the fiscal analysis at that time? Were my salary, benefits, and retirement contributions eliminated to overall financial benefit for the college? Or was I simply collateral damage in a highly political change? The president's assertion that this proposed restructure will save public funds remains unproven, and certainly hiring unnecessary consultants doesn't save anyone any money. To name another quote, "financial need," from that same 2015 reorganization, it was the president who eliminated the then vacant cabinet position of Vice President of Business Services, due to a stated need for flattening the organization and downgrading the title to Executive Director. It is a struggle now for taxpayers in this community to understand how a flip-flop expansion of duties in these positions have now recurred so soon. If campus needs were not met by a past reorganization, then this new proposal makes the previous projection disingenuous at worst or poorly calculated at best, not to mention highly suspect with regard to equity for the female employee who last held the role. Will the president be able to expand and contract these jobs on campus at will, with changing rationale and without open hiring, or even complete job descriptions and salaries in the future? Perhaps most obviously, the cost of recruitment is not an explanation not to have one. Why not simply open proposed positions to traditional recruitment and avoid the lengthy operational time and cost of negotiation, staff meetings, potential lawsuits, Department for Employment and Housing Claims, and PERB charges? Has the district calculated how much time it has lost in employee productivity due to its failure to bargain these contractual issues? Has the board attempted a cost-benefit analysis of how many of these unnecessary expenses it has undertaken for meetings, phone calls, attorney consultations, now a full-time attorney, and now further exorbitant payments to extraneous consultancy firms? This cost likely far outweighs the cost of simply recruiting the open positions, following the bargaining agreements, and following the rules. Better yet, if we're talking budgetary concern, executives are more than welcome to undergo a financial survey of compensation and expense funds for cellphones, vehicles, and travel provided by this board, perks that allow our president to govern from a city in which he refuses to live full-time, and with regard to a vehicle allowance, have never been afforded to any past presidents. Why not start cuts at the top of the organization, where arguably salaries have a lot more room to spare than those of frontline employees as a result of dubious outside surveys? The reality is that these proposals are not about funding. They are about distraction and fear, and this community's tolerance of those tactics is wearing thin. In a shared governance climate, respect is not owed, it is earned. Nominating friends and familiars to lucrative positions rather than simply following the rules-
30 seconds left.
Wasting public funds on attorneys and consultants to find legal loopholes to avoid collective bargaining does not earn it. Speaking down to the student community you serve does not earn it. If you choose to go down this road, if you fail to act, this community and this campus will remember.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on 13.3? Advice on 13.3? Did we get her?
They asked for advice, Juliette.
Can you hear me?
Ah, there you are.
Okay. I said, I don't support it, I agree with what everybody said. I think we should try to hold off on passing it, for making a little bit of a change.
Okay, so Juliette, this is the personnel schedule. This is the personnel schedule. The last comment was actually talking more about 14.1, I think. Kind of all mixed together. So right now, we're on 13.3. Oh, okay. Well, when she comes back on, let me know. We got her?
No.
Okay. So I'll call for a vote from the rest of the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 13.3 passes. Now we'll move on to 14.1. Approval to award contract MGT of America Consulting LLC for the Classification and Compensation Study, RFP, ABC 2019-2020-16, conducting a classification and compensation study for classified employees. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Very good. As part of our discussion, we do have comments via Zoom, so we will bring those in at this time, beginning with Ms. Ford. And I will remind each person bringing comments that comments are limited to five minutes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. I'm the president of the Classified-
Hello? Can you hear me? Yes, we can. Okay. Good evening. I'm the president of the Classified-
Pamela, it's your YouTube feed. If you could close still YouTube feed, I'd be able to hear you.
Hello?
We hear you. Can you hear us?
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. As President of the Classified Union, I'm here to speak to you tonight about action item 14.1 concerning the Classification Compensation Study. I'm a realist, and to put it bluntly, though the district would like to paint the rosy picture that reclassifications mean upward mobility and salary increases by lining up positions into families, you board members, having held administrative positions, are fully aware, in times of fiscal uncertainty, classifications can also lead to position eliminations and demotions and salary reductions. For those reasons and the following, the Federation is not in support of this action. In good faith, in mediation, the district signed off on the agreement that there would be no reopeners, and they removed the reclassification items from the items to be negotiated. The Federation repeatedly fought to keep reopeners, but the district vehemently refused. The next window of opportunity to negotiate items within the collective bargaining agreement, if sun shined, is when the agreement expires in July 2021. It is within the collective bargaining agreement, therefore, it's a unilateral departure from the collective bargaining agreement for the district to move forward with this. The Federation submitted a cease and desist statement to the district and demanded to bargain this reclassification. The district has not responded to the Federation with dates to bargain and has moved forward with this unilateral change. The district once again engaged in direct dealing by soliciting classified employees to represent classified on this committee, sidestepping the Federation. One classified is not even a deuce-hand member, and neither were appointed by the Federation. All components of the reclassification are mandatory subjects of bargaining: salaries, benefits, job descriptions, benchmarks, and so forth. Even if the study is conducted and concluded, it still must be bargained. The district has had countless opportunities to support the current classification/reclassification process, but each time refuses to do so, and instead denies the majority of reclassifications the committee approves, and only approves those of individuals within the president's favor. With these facts in mind, we seek the board's indulgence to require the president to honor the agreed negotiated classification study within the collective bargaining agreement and adhere to that agreement. In good conscience, the Federation cannot support this action, and if you approve this action item, you are participating in and approving the district's action to a unilateral change and departure from the collective bargaining agreement, bad faith bargaining, direct dealing, failure to bargain, and various other violations, leaving the Federation with no alternative but to file another PERB charge, which we feel certain we will once again prevail. We seek your indulgence in asking the president to stop this process, work with us to keep the district in compliance and in good faith bargaining. And to ensure that the board is kept in the loop and not blindsided by the district's actions, we ask that the board select a member of the board to sit in on the negotiations, affording them with firsthand knowledge of the bargaining proceedings. Martin Luther King said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. You guys already know me, but I wanted to state that as President of the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, I believe it is important to stand in support of adherence to the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees and the district. For this reason, I urge the members of the ABC Board of Trustees to vote against action item 14.1, as it appears to create a unilateral change to the ABCFCE's collective bargaining agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Brenda Hume still on? I think she already spoke to it, but I'm asking Rick if she's still waiting.
She is still on.
Hi, was that a question?
I have you listed with a separate comment for 14.1, though I think you already spoke to it.
Correct. My comments were on both agenda items under 13 and 14, correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Then we're good. Ms. President, can you speak a little bit to the collective bargaining agreement as it relates to the contract for the compensation study?
The Classification and Compensation Study is fact-finding, period. All we're doing is collecting information so that we have reference material to move. If there were any movement at all, we understand that there is a negotiation that occurs and that would be upheld within the CBA. We are simply engaging and finding comparable information from our sister institutions in the region and in conjunction with the positions that we have here. There is no attempt to bargain or go around anything at that point unilaterally. With the information, if there is something that needs to be negotiated, we fully understand that it will be negotiated.
Thank you. So just for clarification, this is fact-finding. This does not constitute a change to the collective bargaining agreement in any way.
That is correct. It is research-only.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion from the board on 14.1? Okay, 14.1, advice. Juliette, are you there? Okay, then I will call for a vote from the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 14.2, approval of contract with Simplicity Corporation to provide case management software and shared database for human resources and general counsel. So move. Is there any discussion? Advice? I'm just going to keep calling her out. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 14.2 passes. 14.3, approval of internal audit services audit plan from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Do we have a motion? So move. Is there any discussion or questions? Advice? Do we have her back yet?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.4, approval of foster and kinship care education 2020 to 2021, advanced allocation memorandum.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.5, approval of early childhood education fieldwork site agreement with Brandman University for student volunteers. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.6, approval to enter into negotiations with Summit Urgent Care to access health services for students. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.7, approval of memorandum of understanding with the people concerned for housing navigation and location program for students experiencing homelessness. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.8, approval of the affiliation agreement between Antelope Valley College and American Medical Response through December 31, 2022. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.9, approval of distance education captioning and transcription grant funding, fall 2020.
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.10, approval of service agreement between AccuMedia Master Service and Antelope Valley College and Engineerica Systems Incorporated. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.11, approval to ratify the purchase and use of Staples Contract and Commercial LLC Piggyback Agreement through National Joint Powers Alliance. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.12- 14.12, approval to utilize Verizon Piggyback Agreement 1907 through the Western States Contracting Alliance and the National Association of State Procurement Officials. So move.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.13, approval of resolution declaring the futility of public bidding for acoustical ceilings bid package, campus security building project with Measure AB.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.14, approval of amendment number two for services agreement with Desert Haven Enterprises Incorporated for custodial services. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.15, approval of project assignment amendment to Converse Consultants Incorporated for Project Laboratory of Record Services for Fox Field Hangar Improvements. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.16, approval of project assignment amendment to Golden State Labor Compliance for Consultant Services Labor Compliance Services.
I'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.17, approval of project assignment amendment to HMC Architects for Architectural Services for Fox Field Improvements Project.
I'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.18, approval of project assignment amendment to Nolan Construction Services for Project Inspector of Record Services for Discovery Lab and Campus Infrastructure Projects. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.19, approval of project assignment amendment to United Heider Inspection Group and Testing for Geotechnical Services with Measure AB Funds.
I'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14.20, approval of correction to June 8th, 2020 Board Communication, Agenda Item Number 14.38, provision to project assignment amendment to TTG/IMEG for land survey services, campus project surveys from Measure AB Funds. So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.21, approval of field contract for services with Mesa Energy Systems for Chiller II VFD replacement.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. 14.22, approval for the Department of Conservation California Geological Survey Fees for Geological Hazard Reports for Cedar Hall Project 18021 with Measure AB Funds. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Item 15 is information items, and you'll see the Community College District Facilities monthly report, and we'll move on to item 16. And we have four reports via Zoom, so we'll move directly to those. And I have Cameron Zapata. Wait, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, my apologies. We'll go in order by agenda. 16.1 is the Academic Senate, and we have Ty Metler in.
The board president Knutson, as we head into week five of the fall semester, the Academic Senate wishes welcome the new adjunct members to the ABC faculty. We recognize the faculty's dedication in providing quality instruction, support, and understanding to our ABC students during this unique environment. Likewise, the Senate appreciates the continuing attention of the standing Senate committees in ensuring that the work of the academic and professional matters pertaining to the faculty. We also recognize the hard work and contributions of the administrative co-chairs and classified members in seeing this work is completed. For your information, Professor Tina McDermott was appointed as the next tenure review coordinator. We welcome her to the Senate leadership and look forward to her leadership and contributions in shepherding the current 50-year work committees. Also, the Senate Executive Committee has set the following four goals for the 2020-2021 academic year. Number one, strengthen the relationship and mutual support between the AS or Academic Senate and the Associated Student Organization. Two, improve Senate communication to and with faculty. Three, build faculty unity through collaborative engagement. Four, strengthen equity efforts through building stronger relationships with the ASO and student equity. The Senate continues to recognize all constituent groups' work collaboratively in its respective areas and responsibilities, whether in academic or professional matters, collective bargaining, participatory governance, or any activity for the betterment of the college's student success and institutional development. The Senate continues to appreciate and encourage collaboration, communication, and understanding for the improvement of all at ABC. And this is submitted by the writer.
Thank you. 16.2, the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, and that's Aurora Bird.
All right. Good evening, everybody, again. The Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers has taken note of the deteriorating campus climate, primarily caused by actions of the administration. I am disappointed but not surprised, given Summers Administrative Reorganization, which was opposed by every campus constituency, except the members of the ABC administration, the lack of communication regarding the COVID-19 situation, which caused the beginning of the semester to be a wash and chaos, including multiple issues affecting the ABC website, Canvas, CCC Zoom, and my ABC during the first week of classes, and the president's chilling email attack on a student, which the board apparently approved, since there do not appear to have been any demonstrations or repercussions from any board members on this issue. Members of ABCFT were recently asked to complete a survey related to the campus climate. The results show that many faculty distrust the ability of the ABC administration to lead the college through this difficulty. Tonight, a focus on three instances where the ABC administration shows a lack of transparency and the lack of openness of communication with the campus community. As the COVID-19 pandemic continues, safety for all students, faculty, and staff on campus continues to be of utmost importance to us. From the recent survey, two numbers stand out. First, 83% of respondents prefer working remotely, either entirely from home or only on campus once every two weeks or less. Second, just over 50% of respondents feel the administration has not been upfront and honest in communicating information about COVID-19 policies, guidelines, or cases. This is a narrow majority, but the fact that the respondents were so evenly split shows that the current modus operandi is not sufficient. Many respondents remarked on ABC's lack of transparency regarding case counts on campus and the slow decision-making, particularly the continuously rolling date at which certain classes are to be back on campus, which means that while other colleges have made a decision for the entire semester so that faculty and students can plan appropriately, ABC's faculty and students are left anxiously in limbo without clear expectations. Faculty note that ABC's COVID-19 response is adding to their stress, and several note that ABC seems to have shown little gratitude for the time spent by faculty to convert classes to the online environment and the expenses incurred by many to upgrade home computer systems, internet speed, and additional equipment such as printers, whiteboards, and dock cams. I know the COVID-19 dashboard on the ABC website has recently been revamped and that the administration is attempting to respond better to the COVID-19 situation. This is a good start, and I encourage the administration to continue to pursue openness and timely flow of information to the campus community regarding policies, procedures, and future plans. New topic, despite repeated requests for representation, the faculty union does not have a representative on the Vice President of Academic Affairs search committee. Past precedent has been that the faculty union president sits on VP-level search committees. AP 7122A specifies that a representative of faculty be on the committee. The Federation believes that loss of the faculty union representative from the committee leaves the committee in violation of AP 7122A. President Knutson claims that there is no violation of the AP. Again, the Federation disagrees with President Knutson's claim and argues that President Knutson's attempt to focus on the AP is an attempt to distract from the real issues, such as transparency of campus hiring processes, respect for all campus constituencies, and trying to ensure that faculty have a seat at the table during the selection of an administrator with direct impact on our working conditions. President Knutson seems unwilling to acknowledge that a problem even exists, but to faculty, the disrespect from administration and loss of a seat at the table are very clear. President Knutson does note that the AP stipulates that ABCFT, AVCFCE, and the Academic Senate do have a forum with the finalists for the position. However, this is not the same as having an actual representative on the search committee and being involved in the search process. Is there any remedy to this lack of representation on the search committee? Why, yes, there is. In email correspondence with President Knutson, I noted that AP 7122F specifies that the committee can change in the event of an emergency or as necessary as determined by the Vice President of Human Resources or EEO officer and the chair of the search committee as applicable. In fact, this AP has recently been used to replace two of the administrators on the committee. There appears to be no reason why AP 7122F can't be used to replace the faculty union representative on this committee, and frankly, it seems like a really easy way for administration to show respect for faculty and improve the campus climate. Given the current resolution of a COVID-19 emergency passed by the Board of Trustees on March 16th, 2020, past practice of inclusion of the ABCFT on VP-level committees, recent use of AP 7122F to replace two administrators on this committee, the recommendation from the Academic Senate in favor of inclusion of the union representative on this committee, as well as the recent formation of the new committee, I again respectfully request that the Federation be allowed to have myself or an appointee serve on this community. Finally, as mentioned by several of the speakers earlier tonight, over the summer, the all-faculty and all-classified email lists were essentially censored, whereas previously all-faculty could both send and reply to the list, now the vast majority of faculty are unable to do so. As noted at the August board meeting, this is arguably in response to some vitriolic discussions on the all-faculty list. However, this list continues to be the only mode that faculty currently have of having a campus-wide discussion. It is also the only way that faculty can disseminate information, such as by inviting faculty to faculty-led FPD events or answering questions about a particular event. Even when the campus is open, we are not able to gather all faculty together, so this is the only way faculty can have a truly campus-wide discussion or communicate with a broad range of faculty outside of their immediate discipline or division. Even as ABC regularly requests that all communication occur through official channels, and while other avenues of more casual conversation are not available this semester due to the COVID-19 pandemic, President Knutson has chosen to shut down the ability of faculty to communicate with each other about the myriad issues that come up during this semester. This censorship has made the campus a less welcoming, less collegial place for both faculty and students. As noted in August, the vast majority of emails on the all-faculty list were on topic and represented healthy discussion amongst colleagues. Also, as noted in August, if there is a complaint about a specific faculty member's online behavior, that should be handled by the already established, contractually agreed-upon progressive discipline process. It is important that open dialogue continues, even when it is uncomfortable. This effort of administration to silence faculty is a mistake which faculty will not forget. I respectfully request that this list be reopened. The ABC administration could work collaboratively with faculty, staff, and students, but instead, it seems that it chooses at nearly every opportunity to disregard these important campus constituencies, make decisions behind closed doors, and stifled discussion. ABC faculty have tried to work together with each other and collaborate to best serve students during this difficult time. It would be greatly appreciated if the administration were to meet us halfway. I urge the ABC administration to return to working with other campus constituencies in the spirit of collaboration, openness, and kindness. Thank you.
16.3, Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees. Pamela Ford.
Pamela, go ahead.
Moving on. Nothing? Okay, we'll move on and come back if she comes up. All right. Let's see. So 16.4, do we have Jared Simmons? Or no? Okay. Then 16.5, the Associated Student Organization. Cameron Zapata.
Good afternoon, board.
Hi.
I wanted first and foremost to apologize for my absence at the last board meeting. I wanted to announce that we are working currently on having an open forum for the Board of Trustees candidates. We're currently looking for a moderator, but I just want to let you know that that is underway. We're also looking at creating a movie night event to help boost campus morale and provide a sense of community back where I believe it's been so sorely missed since the beginning of this pandemic. I'm also happy to say that we partook in the SSCCC Delicate Assembly earlier last month to vote in some new executive officers in that organization, and also that Region Six of the SSCCC has been activated and that we, as a college, are an active participant and are looking forward to advocating for students on the statewide level. I'm also proud to say that we are working to have a closer relationship with the Academic Senate. We are proud to be working in that direction. We're also working with the Student Engagement and Voter Empowerment Committee to help encourage our students to vote and to create ideas and marketing campaigns, so that way we can have a good amount of our students actually participate in this monumentous upcoming election and other votes. Thank you.
Thank you. And no report from the Foundation this time? Do we have Pamela back?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. First of all, on behalf of the Federation, we would like to convey our deepest sympathy regarding the loss of Irene Gat and also acknowledge the thoughtful gesture on the part of the president to part of the president to open an email thread for acknowledgements of Irene. Excuse me. At the conclusion of the last board meeting, it appeared there was more concern on the part of the board regarding whether or not there was a time limit on constituent reports than on the concerns expressed by constituent groups. The idea that you allowed the reorg to pass without requiring adherence to policies and procedures and troubling, and now the classification demonstrates clearly you don't support your own policies. When are you going to lead? Nothing we bring forward are borne by us. They are reaction to the bypassing of longstanding policies and procedures on the part of the district and the board that affect not just staff and faculty but our students. We express numerous concerns regarding COVID. Do you think that only applies to us, knowing it impacts our students? We too conducted a survey of classified D10 members and the results regarding health and safety as it relates to the COVID crisis resulted in 89% of those surveyed being concerned about the district not being upfront about active COVID cases on campus, not providing a written policy notifying the campus of all confirmed cases. The district should require mask wearing of all employees, including management, provide a written plan for consistent cleaning, and change of airflow and HVAC system. We want our campus community to have safe conditions. What will you do to demonstrate you take our concerns seriously and that you require a safe environment and transparency? Would you want less for yourself? Once again, the district is not following its own hiring practices regarding the Vice President of Academic Affairs Hiring Committee by changing the chair and then using semantics to justify their position and denying the unions to fill their seats on the committee. The board took a stand before. I researched it and found an article in the Valley Press in which the board held firm that people on the committee have to be dedicated to every meeting. And another board member said, if you miss a meeting, you're off. They have, they left no room or exceptions for replacement. What will you do to unite us and help us to get this right and bring this committee online with our practices and policies? Both union group emails were shut down due to the district's perception of inappropriate made by faculty not classified. Is this how you think this matter should be resolved, censoring us by shutting down our emails instead of addressing the problem? How can you help us with this so our students feel comforted in knowing they have instructors who truly care about them? What happened to Omar? Is he all right? Has the board reached out to him? Will he be returning? Has he and his family been sent a true letter of apology by the district and not the standard disavowal letter? Those letters are common. I have one. How can you, as a board, help us welcome this student back? I hope you understand what we ask for is not just for us. It is our integrity that drives us to have concern for the benefit of our students and the campus as a whole. How will you demonstrate your integrity? What commitment are you willing to make to be instrumental in enforcing policies and procedures requiring transparency and unifying this campus? Integrity is choosing your thoughts and actions based on value rather than the personal gain of an individual or favored group. Are you, as a board, willing to join with us and resolve these issues thereby building unity? Thank you.
All right. Superintendent President?
Just that I will provide a written report in response to the board and everybody who made comments this evening regarding their concerns.
Thank you. Board comment?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. No, Mr. Allen? Buckle? No? All right, then, with that, our next meeting is scheduled for October 12th, 2020, and the meeting is adjourned.